Agenda is a very brief update on flood restoration finances. I'll try to keep this short to keep us on time, and I know everyone's much more excited to talk about community campus than to go through lots of numbers related to stormwater. I do have a sheet that I passed out for the council and the plan commission members. I've got a copy of that up on the screen. I understand that it's going to be very hard to see. I'll try to blow it up a little bit. And I'm not intending to go through all the numbers on this sheet, but we wanted to, it's been awhile since we've done an update, wanted to try to consolidate down to one sheet, a high-level summary of the past, current, and some potential future projects related to stormwater and flood recovery, and what some initial thoughts are on funding sources. Wanted to give a couple of quick updates on where we are at, and then kind of explaining the way this is laid out. We have things listed here from the initial emergency response, so police, fire, EMS, public works, initial response from the flooding, listed at the top, to kind of in the middle of the sheet, some current projects that are underway. And as we get farther down the sheet, these are either projects that are still under design, or in some cases, we just have concepts and the projects would need to be designed and bid. That also means that on the top of the sheet, the numbers on the projects are more definite and certain, and some of those have actually been spent. To getting down to the final project on here, the line 35 for the Pheasant Branch Creek Bridge and Trail repairs, we literally just yesterday got the latest draft of the master plan study, pulled a number from that document, but that's very conceptual, and there's lots of decisions that need to be made there. Another big question always is where we are in the FEMA process and for FEMA funding. And for each of these items, after identify our best estimate of the cost, we've got what's identified as a primary source of funds, so either the initial funding or the main funding source. Over on the right side of the document, there's a column labeled FEMA eligible, and then what FEMA and state funds have been paid to date, and then what our total cost estimate is minus what's been paid to date. For these top several projects, we've gone through the FEMA process, it's been obligated, we've already received funds, so there, it's yes, and we know what the numbers are, and we may need to do some final closeout documentation to FEMA, but we're pretty certain about those numbers. As we go down, we start to run into some projects that are listed as maybe, and that's because not all of our FEMA projects have been approved yet. When we did our initial discussions with FEMA after the storm, they grouped our damage areas into 14 projects. Out of those 14 projects, 10 of those have been obligated or approved, and a lot of those have been paid, as you've seen. The four that are remaining, there are two related to water control flood issues, which includes the Pheasant Branch Creek, as well as projects for things that are currently underway or just being completed, like the Donna Drive Detention Pond, the slope at Park Street, the Baskerville Harbor work, and then the Creek Corridor itself. Those projects are still in the FEMA review process. They also have the project for future work related to public lands, park, and recreation, including things like the bridges and the trail repairs. And then the last one, which is always FEMA waits till the end, is management costs, because that, all the other ones need to be set before they can determine the amount of management cost. So while we have 10 projects that have been approved and obligated, our three biggest ones related to the water control and the public lands are still in the FEMA process. And that's been frustrating at how long it's been taken to try to move those projects through to completion. We're now on, I believe it's our fifth project manager at FEMA, as they assign people, and then they get assigned elsewhere, and new people come in. They've closed down their Madison office, and we're now working with somebody out of the regional Chicago office, and our most recent project manager was just assigned around the beginning of December. We heard from her on December 5th that she took a look at all of our outstanding projects to see where things are at, and she identified two major issues that are holding things up. One of those is that they said, "We need to have documentation that we didn't or are not eligible to receive funds from the NRCS program," which is a program in the U.S. Department of Agriculture that's intended to relieve immediate threats to life and property. We had previously indicated that we did not receive any federal assistance from that program. Part of the rules of FEMA is you can't double count money from multiple federal sources. But they're now saying that even though we didn't receive money, we need to show that either we applied and were denied, or that we wouldn't have received money from that program if we had applied. We, and Sean Stausky, did a lot of this in Public Works, contacted the national people, they referred them to some Wisconsin people for that program, we worked with them, and we feel that we would not have qualified for that. It's really intended for resolving imminent threats to life and property, and there's a requirement that you would have to apply within 60 days of the event and use the funds right away. We didn't even have our first meetings with FEMA for the applicant briefing within 60 days, and we don't feel that our programs would have fallen under that. And we've submitted that documentation to FEMA to say, "Nope, we wouldn't qualify for this, please continue with the FEMA route," and we're waiting for their answer. The other major item they said is holding things up is that for embankment projects or projects near stormwater embankments, that you need to demonstrate that those are essential to supporting an eligible facility. By eligible facility, they've said, that doesn't have to be a building, it could be something like a stormwater management plan, and that's the case again that we are trying to make, to say that the Creek Corridor and the Stream Bank, all of that's essential to stormwater management for the city of Middleton, and we've provided them with the draft of the master plan study for the Creek Corridor, and again, that is back in FEMA's court for them to review and answer that question. So until we go through that process, we're not going to know for sure what FEMA is going to fund for some of these projects, and that's why we've listed them as maybes. We do expect that we are going to receive some federal assistance, but at this point, I don't want to guess what they are going to determine is eligible or not, or what that amount of funding is.
Do we have a timeline for when that might occur, like next year, two years?
No, unfortunately, no. I hope it's not much longer. I think our projects were sitting for awhile, I think part of that was due to them shifting project managers out. We had a project manager that was very active in trying to push things, and then she left. We had one that came in that was very hands-off, and it was hard to even get a response from her, we'd leave two, three messages and not hear anything. The one that we had assigned in December seems like she's going to be better at being responsive and helping us move this forward. I'm hoping it's months, not years, but I don't know for sure.
Thank you.
We'll get down to the list, some of the projects more towards the bottom. We have some items that are listed as no for FEMA eligibility, and these are things where they're not directly related to repair of a damaged facility. And this might include some of the things like the North Fork Pond Study, looking at, are there opportunities for additional detention north or west of the city to help mitigate water before it even gets to the city? And some of the items, like looking at the Graber and Tiedemann Pond elevation controls. And for the last item on here, for the Pheasant Branch Creek Bridge and Trail repairs, hopefully some of that, that's to repair the damage will be eligible, but if the city wants to go forward and make enhancements, or do things to provide future mitigation, we can request some mitigation funds, but it's likely that some of that will not be FEMA eligible. So on the bottom, we've listed what are the totals for our best estimates for these items that we know of to date. I'm just realizing the one on the screen doesn't even have the $2 million number we added in for the bridges and trails, that is on your printed sheet, but we literally just added that in yesterday afternoon. And then we've got some summary by funding source. And so as we go forward, we learn more about FEMA, we can plug those numbers in, and we have some funding sources that we've identified for projects from the general fund contingency that was used initially, and some capital carryover. We've done some general borrowing for some of the projects that are currently underway. Stormwater Utility is funding a lot of the projects, and then grant dollars both from the DNR and Dane County. That's very quick and high-level, just wanted to introduce it. I can take any quick questions, and then I'm sure we'll discuss this further in future meetings.
Any questions from the Plan Commission?
Maybe a question, just highlighting the fact that it looks like, so I know more money could be coming, but it looks like FEMA has paid 1/16 approximately of the cost of the $7.5 million of damage, and hopefully it'll go up from there, but 1/16 is miniscule, and that the city is on the hook for everything else. Is that the correct statement right now?
Yeah.
And hopefully, some of that, maybe they'll make up a little more difference?
Yeah, right now FEMA's paid $451,000 to date between FEMA and the state matching funds. For eligible items, FEMA and the state would collectively pay 87.5%, and the city would be paying 12.5%. The reason why the number is so low compared to the total damages is because our biggest projects for FEMA are the ones that are still under review. The ones with the big costs are the ones for the Creek Corridor, and the stormwater, and the flood control. What FEMA has told us is that they would only fund areas that had previously been engineered, and they will only pay for the cost to repair damage, and then there's some opportunities for mitigation that's generally limited to 15% of the project costs. So, we know it's not going to cover everything, hopefully that number will go up. You know, based on the estimates and numbers we provided to FEMA, I could see us getting up over $2 million as a number from FEMA, but we don't know that yet. And we don't want to count on that or try to guess what that could be. We know there's going to be a sizable local share regardless of where the FEMA number ends up.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to Abby.
We are right on time, I don't think this has ever happened before. So, nice job. All right, so we invited members from the public to come and listen and learn more about the community campus plan as well. So it looks like we have quite a few representatives and residents and other folks who are interested in learning more about what's happening. I just wanted to give a brief intro, and then we'll turn it over to our consultants from SEH and EUA, who will go over the details of the concepts that we're looking at currently. So a little bit of background about the impetus for the community campus plan. This goes back a decade or so. Some of the key points were, in 2012, the city purchased the site of the former Middleton Outreach Ministry Building next to City Hall. We demolished the building, and we just kept it and held it, thinking that it might serve a purpose for future reconfiguration of city buildings, or possibly a future expansion of City Hall. In 2014 and in 2016, we started to really visually see an increased development pressure in downtown Middleton. The first project was the Middleton Station Apartments, and that's where we saw one single-family home next to the Capital Brewery be redeveloped into a five-story, 39-unit apartment building. And then, in 2016, we saw construction of the first phase of Middleton Center, and that of course is the redevelopment of two-story buildings that were not accessible into three, four, and five-story mixed-use development. In 2016, the Library Board worked with Dimension IV to develop a space needs and building study for the library. And that study found a need to nearly triple the size of the library to accommodate a 20-year projected space need, so that was through 2035. And then, some of the ongoing considerations have been deferred maintenance of city buildings, including City Hall and the Senior Center. I know during capital budgeting and through the CIP process, we've had a lot of questions that we haven't really been able to answer. Should we invest in a new boiler for this building, or does it make sense to wait if the building's going to be redeveloped? We've also had ongoing concerns that we've heard from downtown businesses about parking, and the city has conducted parking studies, working with Walker Parking Consultants in 2012, 2016, and we're undergoing another study funded by private development currently. And then, also, we have a desire to use TIFF3 funding while it's available. You heard from Bill earlier this morning that TIFF3 is the most, has the most increment of any TIFF district in the state in 2019. And so if the city does decide to proceed with this community campus, we should try to maximize TIFF3 where we can to help cover the costs. The primary goals that were approved by the Plan Commission and the City Council before we sent out the request for proposals for this project were to identify opportunities to modernize and/or replace the city's current public facilities, to identify opportunities for more efficient utilization of land, to ensure that our municipal facility space needs are met, to identify opportunities for private development, to enhance downtown Middleton, and to align with the city's ambitious goals related to environmental sustainability. In the RFP, there were also 13 additional goals, but I won't go over all of those. These are the six primary goals that we wanted to see out of this planning process. So we have a community campus committee that is guiding this process, has met several times with our consultant team, and that is a nine-member committee consisting of a Plan Commission appointment, Jen Murray, who also serves as the chair, and that's why she got to sit with the City Council today. Common Council appointment, which is Kathy Olson from District 1, and Kathy also lives on the same block of this project. A PRFC appointment, which is Matt Amundson, Library Director is appointed from the Library Board, Dosselin Sansing. The Senior Center Board appointed Tammy Derrickson, our Senior Center Director. The Chamber of Commerce representative is currently now our new Chamber Director, Kate Wicker. She's only been to one meeting in her new job. And then we have three mayoral appointments from differing Aldermanic districts confirmed by the council, and those are Cindy Zellers, Justin Balweg, and Jen Cole. Before we get into the next point, I just wanted to mention that what you're going to see from our consulting team today is the current three concepts that are being considered. We have been through iterations of other concepts, and they continue to refine those concepts. I also just wanted to mention that we know that there is significant concern coming from the Senior Center, and particularly, I think the Commission on Aging is worried about what is called in the proposals, the intergenerational center, and they would really like to drill down more to find out what, within that building, that would house both a senior center and a community center, what would be dedicated space for the senior center? Because they really feel that it is important that the seniors have their own separate, dedicated space. So those are programming discussions that will continue to happen as we go forward in this project. So, on a separate note, but related, the city has been working with the Legacy Community Alliance for Health over the past couple of years. This is a project that's funded through the Green Tier Legacy Communities Group, of which we are one of the charter members, and there's some significant grant funding associated with this collaboration. The goal of this group is to work with communities to show how environment, which is commonly referred to as the social determinants of health, greatly influences health outcomes for individuals within a community. One of the most startling things that I learned a few years back at a conference is that someone's zip code is a better predictor of health outcomes than things like income level, clinical care, even whether an individual smokes or not. Where they live can have an even bigger impact on those kinds of health outcomes. And so these social determinants are things that local governments influence by the decisions that they make every day, like how to invest in local programs, how to prioritize projects, and where to prioritize infrastructure. We have had several city departments involved over the last couple of years with this Legacy Community Alliance for Health group, including administration, library, public lands, senior center, and planning and community development. We've attended trainings that are put on by our partners at the bottom of the slide here, and we have been looking for a project that we could undertake in the city to use a health and equity lens as a tool for evaluation. What this would mean if we were to decide, like we're proposing, which is to use it on the community campus plan, we're thinking that this could have some really positive benefits for the plan, because it would allow some extended public input into the process. You may have looked at the initial timeline that we had laid out, and we think now we made a mistake, and we were a little too ambitious, especially, you know, as we're hearing from members of the public that feel like they haven't really been engaged yet. That is, on no fault of the consulting team, that is because we had a pretty lean scope for public engagement that was included initially in the RFP. If we were to decide that we use this health equity analysis, this would be something that could be led by staff. We would extend the community campus planning process about eight months, and during those eight-month period, our consultants would go on hiatus, while our city staff facilitate public input sessions on the three concepts that eventually will be recommended by the Community Campus Committee. Health equity means that everyone has a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible, no matter who we are, where we live, or how much money we make. Social, economic, and environmental factors influence up to 55% of a person's health. And on the right-hand side of this screen, you can see the county health rankings model, and in particular in the light blue, there are a lot of things that, even in the last 10 years with the city, that the City Council has made decisions that impact many of these So as I mentioned, using a health equity lens for the community campus plan could allow us an opportunity to more effectively engage all members of the public, to improve collaboration with local government and community groups and representatives, and possibly to improve long-term adverse health impacts. This could be a cross-departmental, sustainable framework that can be used on this project and potential future city projects. And what we really like about using the community campus plan is that it is cross-departmental. So if I'm getting trained on this lens at the same time that our Sustainability Coordinator and our Library Director and other folks from different departments are getting trained and are using the tool, we can more easily apply it to future projects in the city. So that is all I had for your consideration. Now I'm going to turn it over to our consulting team. I have a cheat sheet here with all their names, because I forget which acronym they're from sometimes, because they work so well together that I forget. So our lead consultant on this project is Bob Kost from SEH. We also have in the audience Darren Fortney from SEH, and Nate Day from SEH, and also Molly Wagner from SEH. And then, from the EUA side, we have Paul Reisleger and Andy Lyons. Did I miss anybody? Okay, I'll go ahead and turn it over to...
Aren't you going to mention how many of them are city residents?
Many of them are city residents. You may know them already.
Nobody from Fendorf.
Oh yeah, and also, Fendorf is helping with the construction cost estimates, and I don't believe anybody from Fendorf is here today. Great.
Thanks, everybody, for having us in today. So what we want to go through is a quick project review, some of what we have done in the last year, or nine months or so, a little bit about our space plan refinements. So our early concept, and I think we reported out to Common Council several months ago, when we had arrived at our space needs study inputs. We have since, in meeting with our committee and talking to others, refined those needs. So we'll go through that. Massing and streetscape refinements, that Abby just talked about, kind of where we are in the design process. We have spent a lot of time with Fendorf looking at the costs, and sort of the cost ramifications and parameters. Certainly want input from you, but by all means, ask questions as we go through here, you don't have to wait till the end. And then we'll have a little report out about where we're going from here. So here's the sites. We're about 3.3 to 3.5 acres. You know, we've got the parking lot site over on Terrace, we've got the library and its parking lot, and the connection from Parmenter behind the Hubbard Diner, and we've got, in sort of the orangish color, this current senior center, the parking lot next to that, and the City Hall site. So we really have been looking at all of this land as part of how to distribute and look at the program. I won't go through the goals again, we just did that. A quick highlight on kind of where we've been in terms of some milestones. We did do some facility tours, so walked through facilities with program managers and folks working in the buildings. We have done some stakeholder engagement. You might remember from our first report out, we did a Sunday stroll, talked to people on the street. We did an online engagement. We did a community workshop in the fall, over the course of an afternoon and a morning. We've done considerable programming with members of the committee. We've done some option development, as you're going to see, and we're into this round of iterations. So where we kind of landed back in November was a series of three options that I've just quickly kind of have you look at. What you see in the different colors are the different program elements. So the dark blue being City Hall, light blue being Civic Center or Community Center, orange is private development for housing, the yellow is library, and the purple is potential private redevelopment, commercial space, office, retail. And what you see in all three of these options really is a lot of emphasis on mixing things. So our focus was on utilizing most of the land together to distribute the program, and sort of explore ideas for public-private partnerships, and, you know, maybe there's a library with housing above, just one example. So we went through this and had a lot of comments and conversations with our committee and with staff, and where that took us, then, were some key comments that then gave us direction for refinements. Condense and layer, or mix the public uses, there's a real need and desire, and rightly so, to try to have multi-functionality, right? To try to borrow and use and share facilities wherever things are reasonable to do. That's part of maximizing multi-functionality, right? Maximizing the reuse of city-owned land for private development, that really started to move us towards some design ideas that you're going to see coming up, where we can, we're looking at kind of focusing things in one place and allowing all the other lands that you own to potentially go into the private marketplace to generate revenue, or to go into other opportunities to, you know, to lease land. Phase the new construction so that you don't have to have temporary space, so, you know, how the dominoes fall is really important. Avoid reusing existing single-story buildings. Initially, we had some options where we were thinking we could renovate, for example, the library as a senior center, which does make some sense. But the issue is that, as we start to look at the rest of downtown urban form and trying to maximize value, those things really don't give you the return on investment that you probably would if you could really start to start over and, you know, maximize that ability. Minimize impacts to historic Raleigh House and the nearby homes will always be a high priority. We've got Section 106 and historic preservation requirements as the project moves forward. One of the concepts looked at, well, several of the concepts early on looked at closing Hubbard, that was some input we got during the public meetings, and one of those looked at a turnaround, and really was really felt that that was probably not appropriate for downtown, having the cul-de-sac. Don't put all the parking below grade, that was one of the things we initially started looking at, was that we've got all this lower-level property, and actually the soils aren't, what we think is really aren't too bad here. There may be some parameters that need to be addressed as you move into more feasibility, but nonetheless, the idea here is that some of the parking really needs to remain on-site or above grade. Try to provide the same amount of parking supply, or more if possible, so, you know, we'll continue to work at that. And then, the need to provide space for drop-off and pickup for the senior center and library, just some straightforward programming desires. So the refined program starts to look at these kinds of things, we're looking at reducing the overall square footage to get some efficiencies, that should help reduce some of the costs. Generate those efficiencies through sharing space. One of the ideas that we're proposing here, and we see this as a trend in a lot of other communities, is to think about, since you don't have a dedicated community center right now, to think about how we would actually create an intergenerational center that would both meet the needs and requirements for the senior center, but also allow for youth and other kinds of more community center uses to kind of happen in the same facility, and again, to increase that opportunity for private development. So I'm going to turn this part of the presentation over to our architect, who's in the weeds on all the super details here.
Good morning. My name is Paul Reisleger from EUA, and as Abby had mentioned before, this is really an effort in master planning from a very high a very high level, just to look at what spaces does a city currently hold? What is your anticipated future need? And, you know, how can we plan the community campus for 50 years and beyond? So what we did in the very beginning, and what's really always key when we do the master planning, is to get an idea how big the bucket needs to be to hold the program elements, right? Without getting into and figuring out the exact sizes of spaces, where they go, how do they fit next to one another? Because that's a little bit outside our scope for master plan, and what would happen in the process? When you engage at the next level to find consultants to work on these individual projects, you would then go through a program verification and really work with the users to identify what exactly do they need, and how does that fit within? So then you begin to refine that. So we're really at that high level. So right now, currently, the current space needs, the library is about 35,000 gross square feet. That's the outside container that holds everything inside. City Hall is about 32,000 square feet. The senior center is 20,000 square feet. And the train depot, because there, we really don't have any existing drawings of a floor plate, we estimate that to be about 1,000 square feet. And many of these square footages come from a Johnson Control Facility study from a couple of years ago.
Ten years.
Ten years ago. And they had looked at the mechanicals and everything, and the health of the buildings. So when we go through and we look at the projected needs, you will notice that community center line. And that was a really interesting conversation to have with members of the community campus and city staff, because there is a need of the population that isn't met through sports in the schools and organized sports. And how do we accommodate that within the community? As we all know, every single gym, every single free space in the schools is completely booked up, and it's very difficult to find that additional space. So that conversation became, okay, how big could it be? So we used Wanakee as sort of a model. And that square footage that you recognize there, that includes, you know, basketball courts, locker rooms, you know, all those items. And again, we were holding that as a bucket to see how big it would be in the development. Then, that library number, that includes that 2016 study, and that's a number that accommodates the library to 2035, right? And that's 97,000 gross square feet, roughly three times what they are now. Then the senior center, we bumped that up a little bit, you know, just talking to staff and the director, that they needed about, you know, 50% more space. So we gave them some larger spaces that was dedicated to just them. And then that community center number, so if you add all that together, it's 180,000 square-foot container. And one of the charges in the beginning was to look at a mixed-use building so that we can share mechanical systems. We can share spaces, like if there's meeting spaces, right? We could have that common use to make it more efficient. So we took a look at that number. And then the next exercise was to refine that into these three options that we call the hub, the helm, and the heart. So you see that library number bumped down a little bit to 90,000 square feet. And what we've done is we started the exercise of calling something "shared commons." And that's that area where we can have meeting spaces, we can have flexible spaces, these other areas, kind of in a central location that everyone can use. And then all these elements, there might be like one common lobby space, right? So we can kind of gain efficiency there. Then the intergenerational center, you know, that's a really good, you know, comment that Abby made, and I think it's a topic that's really worth discussing, because what we're trying to avoid is single-use spaces, which makes the project very inefficient. And a trend that we're seeing nationally is these intergenerational centers where you can accommodate the community while providing that autonomy for the seniors, right? Because some want to mix and some do not. So how do we accommodate that? So what we've done is we pulled some of the space out of the senior center, if you will, and we placed it into that shared commons area. And then we bumped up the community center and accommodated some larger spaces in there for that, kind of take that community center function, if you will. So you'll see that shared commons area now is 16,000 square feet. That includes mechanical for that. And within that number, there is a larger multifunction, let's say, like this room, We have a couple of these placed together, and it's divisible, right? And then we have a lot of storage next to it so that you could have movable risers, and you could have presentations and shows while accommodating uses like this and serving as a council chamber. But it's flexible, right? It could become different things, so it doesn't sit all by itself a large part of the year. So that brings us to 153,000 gross square feet. So as I mentioned, there are the three options. And when you look at the diagrams, if you will, there's really two basic locations to put the private functions, right? City Hall, intergenerational center, and library. And that's south of Hubbard, that's, you know, the library site, or north of Hubbard, where we are. And then that lot on Terrace Avenue is always in play, so you'll see that recorded as well. So all the options record that 153,000 gross square feet. They're all roughly four stories in height, with the exception, the one north of Hubbard, we bumped down the height next to the residential areas. And then the fourth one, there's a little common space on top. The parking numbers, that represents parking below the public facilities, okay? And you will see that in the diagram. So you see those numbers recorded there. And then there are a couple of options where we have some on-grade street parking, just parking stalls along the road, and then all of them have parking below grade. Any questions?
Any questions from the plan commission?
I have a question. I want to hear, your initial report said the senior center was 30,000. And I'm seeing...
Right, and that was very early on, before we started to reduce some of the square footages. So we took some of that square footage, we took some of that area that you're talking about, and we placed it in that shared amenity space. So that space we took out and made it part of that 16,000 square feet. And then the thought is to, that's kind of shared, you know, between everybody in the building. And then the other spaces that are not in there could be more just directly associated for the senior center. You know, like your dining room, the kitchen, other activity spaces, offices, and some conference rooms.
Can you define shared space? And the reason everybody's confused about the concept, knowing because, you know, we have 15 rooms that we actively use all the time. And you're going from 30 to 20, so shared space, I mean, I don't know how people actually use the shared space all day, but it's like...
Sure.
Your kids come early at night, that's interesting, or how?
That's exactly part of the discussion, and that's something that would take place at the next phase, you know, as you're going through these projects. So we're accommodating the square footage, and it is flexible. Some of that space that's shared, maybe it comes back to the senior center, maybe it stays public. But what we're trying to do is just get an idea of the bucket size, if that makes sense. And then the pieces of that puzzle can be flexible as you move through the process.
You know what you're using now, and that's what it depends. My thing is, you know, the current building needs to be...
Sure.
You can have more shared space to do more...
That's exactly correct. And, you know, as Bob just mentioned, you know, the current building, there is a certain inefficiency with all the hallways and ramps and getting around. And typically, when we plan new facilities, we try and make them much more efficient. So a lot of those things together, you can, you know, be more efficient with your square footage, and build less and still provide the same space.
Kitty? First Kitty, and then back to you.
Okay, one question that I would have, is that, you know, senior, any senior, senior hatches or lockers, and stuff like that, you've got to get to different levels of ages.
That's a very good comment. And part of the RFP and part of the study is a thought for universal design. And one of the things that will happen in that next phase that Abby was mentioning, that will become much more to the forefront. Certainly, we designed every building to be universally accessible and safe for people to be dropped off and moved through the building. But now this next phase will take a deeper dive into that to begin to address some of your concerns.
Kitty?
Paul, the, I understand that the point you're making about the fact that more specifics of the program was...
Right.
But my concern is that we seriously overstated the program, probably because, and I know you rationalized some of it, but the library itself, the program from 2016, I got a chance to take a look at, and it included some of the same collaboration spaces. A lot, there's a lot of stuff that was added to it, like auditoriums, community learning, media labs, you know, laundry, for heaven's sake, and a long list of things that I think really would have been accommodated, you know, in that 97,000 square feet for the library, and it's multiplying the current space, which is pretty adequate, by three.
Correct.
Three of those, and then you add to it the, you know, well, the City Hall is a whole different entity that needs more space, and it's shown as downsizing, which I worry about. And going on to the intergenerational center, I think that's double counting, some of that stuff in the library. And the shared commons is certainly double counting. So I'm worried that we're really overstating the square footage needed, but...
No, that's a good point. And I think with the library, we took some of that auditorium space out, and we put that in that shared amenity space. And we divided it, and we accommodated a certain amount of storage for movable risers. And that's a really good point with the library, because that was a 2016 study that was really pretty thorough. So part of our master plan effort, we weren't going back and validating that program. We were taking that number and then applying that to this effort. So in the next phase, then, you'd need to break apart those programs and really start to verify them.
I agree.
Does that...
I agree totally, Paul. And I think it was right, decrease, but decreasing by 7,000, and then adding 26 and 16 is, you know, kind of, as I said, overstating.
Well, and in that 26, and in that 16, we're adding in some of the common space that could be used for a community center that can be used for those uses that's separate from the senior center. Does that answer your question a little bit?
No, not at all. Because in my book, the library and is the space, in the last 20 years, I've been designing buildings for governments and private industry, they've all gotten rid of their libraries. I understand that we're changing the terminology, so the concept of library is no longer a library, it's library plus meeting rooms and conference spaces. But so are all the other things we're putting down. The community center, the senior center, the intergenerational center, and the shared commons are all those collaboration spaces. So we're duplicating it, you know, basically.
Right, I see what you're saying. Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think what we're doing is overstating the space needed, but...
So there could be a lot more synergy here. So I think, yeah, that's a good point.
It is. And I think the, you're making very good points. And I think the next phase, then, when you begin to drill down into the programs, would be the next phase. Right now, we're responding to the parameters of the RFP and accommodating those spaces for a master plan. And then, you know, we're trying to work that into, you know, those expectations. I know exactly what you're saying, and I wish I had a better answer, but the next phase would be program verification.
Well, and as you do your shift, then, in the verification, there could be such where, you know, you were worried about the City Hall going from 32 to 20, the library to 90. Some of that lost space from City Hall would actually be used up in shared space in the library then.
Absolutely.
So there's overlap.
Well, and, you know, the other thing, that difference in City Hall size, I went back and looked at the plans, and there is like the evidence room, and the holding cells, and other areas that the police department was using that the City Hall is no longer using. So what you're seeing are the areas that City Hall is using for all the different departments, plus I added a little bit of expansion space. So that's why that City Hall number is different from that 30.
But my point is that some of that library square footage can actually be used, then, by City Hall if they need the space.
Absolutely.
So I think some of that 90,000 could be spillover, for lack of a better word.
Correct.
Right. For example, one of the major rooms within City Hall is this room that we're sitting in now, and we talked about this actually being possibly a shared space where the council might be at the library, or, you know, it could be regularly booked in a different city building. And there might be some benefits to that, because in general, the library is seen as more of a public-facing building, and so we might have more citizen engagement at our meetings if this room were in the library.
Emily, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to, I'm on the aging committee, so I will point that out. And one of my concerns is about, is about our seniors. We are a dementia-friendly city, and so if there is a changing flow every single day, which happens in shared space, it may be challenging for our dementia-friendly neighbors. So I do want to have some design space for them. The second comment is the community center. I keep hearing about basketball courts and basically places to go play. What I've seen in other communities is they also have job-skilling places for teenagers, or places to do arts and crafts, which, again, could be where that library is. So I don't, I don't want us to assume that it's just a space to go play basketball. And I'm sure that's not what you meant, but just clarifying. And the third thing is the library, when I saw it tripling, I had brought up a year ago, well before, and obviously, you didn't see my comments, because I didn't put that in, but if we continue to grow the library, I'm concerned, because I'm on the furthest part of the district, much like, I think, Luke, you're on the other side. We have 80% rentals in my district. Those children go home from school. They often have parents working two to three jobs. Their parents don't have the ability to drop their kids off at the library every night to go get some books. How do they access it? They're probably not taking the bus. We don't ride bikes anymore when you're under age nine. We're not like me, where I could go bike a mile and a half downtown. So I had said, why don't we bring some of the library parts to my side of the district, or neighboring, could be yours, Katie? And then to Luke's side. I mean, if you're going to triple the library, does it have to be all right there? And I'm not trying to say the city should go buy land or do something. But think about that, because if our students are in different parts of the city, and say, luxury apartments are going up downtown, they're not going to have three, four kids in each apartment. I have three or four kids in apartments.
Yeah. Emily, I appreciate that you're bringing this up, because we had the same discussion last week. The last thing that I think the city would have been doing is investing in $80 million or whatever it may be of new public buildings, but not having them accessible to all members of the public.
Thank you.
And this is where I think that this health equity analysis could really come in, where we would be doing intensive and in-depth input, especially with underrepresented community members, and we can find out what those barriers are to accessing these civic amenities. For example, it might make sense to slightly scale back the cost of a building if we can enhance transportation so that 25% more of our residents can access the facility. So I think you're exactly on the right line of thinking. Jocelyn and I just chatted about this last week. The other thing to mention is that the library does have an outreach librarian position, which is a full-time position, and that librarian does circulate throughout the community and has built a lot of relationships with different folks in differing parts of the city, not just people who regularly come downtown. And so I think that we would be able to leverage that as we do enhanced public input throughout this process.
I like to, I like, Paul, that you're going to validate the spaces, and I like what Emily has said. As far as the library is concerned, we have to look at the new models, new options. We have to serve all people, not just the, you know, it may not be just one site. We may have to have, you know, I guess we have to look at the other options, so. Yes, Katie?
Not to get too far off-point, but it's always made me crazy that we have these empty trolleys going through the downtown area, and I know that they're rented by the hotels.
Tourism.
Tourism? Couldn't we figure out a way? I mean, it just seems like we could figure out a way to do library runs after school with these trolleys. It would kind of be in the same areas. I don't know. It just seems silly to have those things running around empty, and I get it.
Would some of this discussion actually be for the next... Would some, some of this discussion actually be for the next phase?
Yes, I totally get it.
That's kind of a program.
I don't want to go too off-point, but I just feel like there are solutions out there, just sitting in front of us.
I, I agree, but I think that we're, we're kind of getting off of...
Yeah, I get it.
Getting a little too...
We are, and just to emphasize, Paul's tried to say, we're, we're looking at programming in the next phase, so right now, we're identifying the large space needs, which could be scaled back in the next phase, subject to programming discussions, as we look to cooperate more on shared space and address some of the issues that we'll, we'll get to in the public process, one of which is transportation, you know, in terms of how can we better use the trolley? Of course, that's an operating expense, and it's a more difficult and challenging discussion, but that, that's clearly the next phase after this initial phase.
One other very key thing that I'm very concerned about that we're using in Middleton is, as one of our criteria to start to use the underground, we have serious problems with flooding, and we've got a flooding level that we've got to deal with. I was part of a team that put in new laboratories underground in Puget Sound Bay, and they needed to do it for a very specific reason, and they paid a fortune for building a bathtub around the basement. It costs a fortune, guys, I don't know why we would even consider putting parking underground in downtown Middleton. I think some of our locations where we're talking about it, you know, up on a hill, where you, you know, above, well above the water table, it makes sense, but I, I really don't understand why in downtown Middleton, we think we need to go underground to put our parking.
And that would also save on the cost. I think we've got to move on, isn't it?
Right, well, I, I do want to respond to that, and it's not that we, we're not aware of that. Again, we're taking a look at the parking you have right now and the development, and we did, we placed it under the buildings, because the water table isn't there right now, but yes, there's flooding. And, you know, that is a bigger conversation, and that's part of the next health, you know, equity assessment that Abby talked about, where there's that next phase to get input from other people around here. And then in the end of that phase, then, we go back, and we're going to revise to one option, that's a recommended plan that takes in feedback from Plan Commission, Common Council residents. So this is not the final that you're seeing right here, there's opportunity for input, and then we'll make revisions to that. This is a snapshot of the areas, and then we'll take note of those...
This is one of our goals, and that's what I'm questioning, why would we do that? And that then dictates what the options are that we came up with. I mean, we could put all the parking in multi-story parking lots, you know, and feed in other areas, and make it around the outside or something. I'm just struggling with why that became a criteria in downtown Middleton.
Okay, just one quick question from Lester, and then we, yes, go ahead.
She brought up parking, and I'm very much concerned about that, too, is when you take a look at where the senior center is, non-parking adjacent, but seniors have a hard enough time just making it from the existing parking lot to the senior center, put that underground, just think of all the problems that would incur then, multi, like, you know, parking and stuff like that for seniors, probably would not work very well.
Maybe we should let them go over the options, because one of the concepts that we're looking at is at-grade parking, but just under a building, and to me, I mean, I don't know from your perspective, but to me, that might be better for a senior to be able to access it, because it's covered, so you don't have to worry about the elements on, on your car throughout the day, and then we could even program or designate those zones for, for people who need them most.
Excellent, Abby, okay.
Go on, Paul, please.
Okay, so the first concept, you know, this is a floor plan cut diagram, and the first thing I want to point out, with the other spaces north of Hubbard and then off of Terrace Avenue, what we're showing right there is a color, it doesn't really show up on the screen, is what that zoning code is, that's B4, okay? And then there's little boxes you'll, you'll see in the images, and we are not saying that is the development. What we're saying is it is a container that illustrates the allowable height by the current zoning code, and then whatever development you place within that container, that's all, we're not developing or designing any of those spaces. And then the colored elements would represent those private components. The red, let's call that the senior center, that blue that you see there, that's the city hall. The yellow represents the library, and then that sort of brownish color with the, the squares between it, right here, that represents that room that's like this, right? But it could be double in size with a room divider, so that you could have presentations, you could bring out movable risers, you could have a show there, you could divide it for a council chambers, and then we would allow meeting spaces around, so that you have that flow for council meetings, oops. So that's, that's what we're indicating there, you know, and all the comments we're getting are very good, and do you want to mention the...
Yeah, so the other thing that you'll see in the three concepts is that we're trying to offer alternatives for how to treat public space related to, again, trying to create a campus atmosphere. So what this does is to propose that Hubbard Avenue in this location becomes what we refer to as a plaza street. So if you can think about the street being made of brick, being more, have a higher design quality, kind of like taking your streetscape and moving it across from one side of the street to the other, now I can close the street and have a block party. I can do festivals here, I can have a reading lab, whatever you want to do. During the day, you know, as traffic moves along, it probably moves a little more slowly, we can still accommodate on-street parking, we can still accommodate drop-off and those sorts of things. It could be permeable, we could create a sponge here and absorb stormwater, so that's one of the ideas that's inherent in this layout. And then the other thing to look at is that there is a on-street or off-street parking lot that you see between where the current senior center is and what would be future private development. That's got about sixteen or seventeen parking spaces.
So in this example, you know, as, I know there will be discussion about parking, the idea is to enter parking next to St. Luke's. Hit it too many times. And then you, you pass to parking that's below the buildings. And what we've done in the estimate is we can record what that costs, okay, so we have a number. Now, in the health equity assessments, say, we want to pull that out, and part of this zoning, or part of this parcel development, the north side of Hubbard, maybe some of that is surface parking, you know, to offset and not have underground parking, but again, this is a snapshot in time, taking a look at those program elements, and what does that cost to put parking under the building? So you'd enter, and then there'd be a dedicated, you know, access to the, for the seniors from within the building. Okay, so this diagram, again, the red is the senior center, blue is city hall, yellow is library, and then these boxes, again, that's just, we broke this up into a parcel here, here, next, you know, in this location, and then on Terrace. And those boxes only illustrate the height that the zoning allows to develop within that box. And these are just, you know, just images, just to, you know, show you what a four-story building looks like downtown, next to the railroad tracks. And we're not saying that any of the development on the roof is exactly that, what we're saying is that that's an opportunity to have an extension of the library, or have it be an extension of a community space on top of the building, very similar to the children's library downtown.
This must be corny. Oh, my God. I like the solar panels.
And then these are just the, the plan diagrams, just to show how you get into the building, how you get out of the building, and where that big common space, that number three, let's call that, that flexible auditorium, that could be, you know, multi-use space, and in this case, it's on the first floor. Did you want me to take questions, or just go through the options and then come back? Okay. So the phasing, so you'll see, the phase one, you'd build whatever you need to build next to the existing library, keep library, city hall, and senior center in use. Phase two, you'd remove the existing library, build that part of the building, move senior center and city hall in, and then the third phase, whatever that development may be in the future down the road, that could occur. So there's no moving of city functions, nobody has to move in an interim for any spaces. So the second concept, the helm, if you will, the real big difference here is that the parking, as Mike or Abby mentioned, you can get some flat parking behind the building, under the building, along the railroad tracks, and then you'd slope down the parking below.
We, we keep that connection between Hubbard and Elmwood. One of the things I want to point out there is that the block length that you've currently have, you know, between Middleton and Parmenter is really quite long for a downtown. So the one option, or maybe benefit, of doing something like this is it also improves walkability, because now I've got a smaller walkable block, two of them actually, with that surface parking, or off-street parking in this case, it could be platted as a street, and that could be seen as some on-street parking in a sense. The streetscape option, an idea here, is modeled after the Dutch concept of a woonerf, which is really sort of more of a mixed, mixed master idea of bringing bicycles and cars and pedestrians all together at the same elevation, no curb, using streetscape elements like plantings and benches and signage and lighting to provide areas for parking, for provide areas for seating. So it takes that idea of a plaza street from the other concept and really kind of doubles down on it. It still allows for vehicles to move through here, albeit you'd be moving quite a bit more slowly, and it still allows for the street to be completely closed for parties and, and events and those sorts of things. But it's just a different way, again, to approach a street as public space.
So in this option, it takes that big flexible auditorium space and places it on the second floor, right, because we have parking behind the building. That's the big difference in the parking access from the first option. So the exterior massing is very similar, with the exception, on the library side, by the railroad tracks, there's a little bit of additional space there, because we placed that big flexible auditorium space on the second floor, so we had to displace some area. You know, and that, that's all very much the same. And then, you know, you'll see solar panels on the roof, that's all part of the sustainability effort that would come in the next phase, or when you begin to work on the projects and program them. It's just a placeholder, if you will, and that's from St. Luke's, looking back to the T-Wall development. The phasing of this option is really exactly the same as the first, first option, and again, any of those spaces north of Hubbard, that's all future programming. And the final option, now, this one, it's a little different impact than the other two, and this is sort of a what-if, you put this size mixed-use development north of Hubbard Avenue. How do you achieve that? How does it impact the neighbors, and how does it phase? Again, it's for, for discussion. So in this option, you know, if you come back up here, Bob, we can talk about the street, but it places the, all the functions north of Hubbard, so you see the senior center, library, and city hall.
And the, and the mixed space, shared space in between the two, so it sort of acts as a knuckle, and a couple of things going on here. One is, instead of having a on-street or off-street parking connection between Hubbard and Elmwood, here we make it pedestrian and bicycle space. So you'll see in the next shot, when Paul moves forward, that the, that the city hall space to the right, which is the blue box, actually, Skyway connects, or Second Story connects over this, so this gives us some plaza space between those two functions, and then it responds to some input, again, that we got during our community workshop about the idea of a campus lawn. When we think about campuses, we often think about a green space or a quad, and our earlier iteration where we closed Hubbard and actually had lawn, turned the street into an open lawn, we have then responded to some input, again, from committee, and said, well, we can create sort of a curved, narrow street, again, that would have, be two-way, it would, and this idea shows no parking, so it's really only about a twenty-foot-wide shared street, but it allows us to have a gracious green space that sits in front of our public space, might be, you know, defined with some bollards, still could be made out of brick and closed off for parties and those sorts of events, but takes a more softer approach to the landscape and to the public space.
So this just illustrates what that program size looks like on this parcel, and I understand there's a huge impact to the residences on this block, but again, it's for discussion, and in the health equity assessment period, this may just fall by the wayside as a, as a nonstarter, but as part of that conversation to look at the different opportunities that are downtown. And then that's that view, as Bob had mentioned, through that pedestrian plaza, looking back to Hubbard Avenue diner, and then there's that connection, that common space between city hall and the library and the senior center. Okay, the phasing for this one, you'd place the, the library in between senior center and city hall, build that first, then the second phase, oh, and what you would do is you'd move the city hall into the top floor of the library in the interim as a flux space, then you could demolish city hall, build that side of the library where city hall is right now, and then move senior center over, and then demolish senior center, build city hall, and then they move in and vacate that library in the top floor of the, of the library. Before we move on, and you know, the comments about parking are a very good one, Katie and everybody else, and that's been part of our conversation, and that is part of, as, you know, Mike mentioned, discussing transportation and the philosophical direction of the city. You know, we heard from some of the early public sessions, well, what if you built a parking ramp or lots on the perimeter, right? And then people had to walk downtown? Well, that, that's certainly one opportunity, but then how does it affect the seniors and the other users of the development? So I think part of all that will be part of this next, this next phase, if you will. Was there any questions before we move on?
Is it only from the committee or from the public as well?
Mayor, is it public commentary, or...
Well, if there are quick questions from the public, but not mainly for the plan commission and the council, if there are some points, you know, sure, so, does anybody from the public have some quick comment? Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
Has anybody considered putting this four-story building, Parmenter over by the police station, and then have all retail, parking here for all the restaurants and stores here, and then that building would have their own parking on Parmenter Street, because you already have all the infrastructure. Did anybody ever think about any of that? That way...
The scope of this study only pertains to the city-owned properties in the downtown, but I can tell you that when the library did their space needs analysis, they had extensive public input, very well-attended sessions, and what they heard loud and clear is that residents did not want the city buildings, in particular, the library, moved out of the downtown. I think we would have a little bit of a battle on our hands with the businesses, too, because if you think of the number of people that come to visit the senior center, or to pay their tax bill, and then go eat at one of the restaurants or shop in one of the stores, the civic uses work very well in conjunction with the business uses, so I think that would be, that would be a pretty big tough sell for the city.
Any other comments from the plan commission before we ask someone? Just a minute, so, anything from the plan commission? The quick one, Katie, now, so, yes.
All right, thank you, Katie, one quick one. The, the one, the one point that I was hoping to see incorporated in this, and maybe, maybe the heart, option three, it doesn't, is that we would create for Middleton a focal point. A lot of cities, including the one I grew up in, Baraboo, have a square that they stick their city hall in, and we didn't run in and out of the city hall, but we did spend a lot of time on the grassy area around it, and everybody relates to it as a focal point, you know, and in Middleton, to me, it feels a whole lot like a suburb, passing through, you know, just part of Madison, that's how it feels overall, as opposed to it being a focal point for us.
Mm-hmm.
Like, you know, the, the three options, you know, maybe one of the options, I, I was thinking closing off of Hubbard Avenue could start to help us do that, you know, maybe, maybe making a bigger deal out of a single-entity city hall.
Okay, that's...
This is short.
Excellent. Just quick ones, so just, yeah, go ahead.
I just have a question. So I look at the program.
Yeah.
By the way, I'm.
At the microphone.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Hamid Nogani. I happen to be your only neighbor of this project, and I really appreciate the, well, you're not the neighbor. To this, to this property? Well, he is too. All right, I'll give it to him. Uh, I'll just keep it. Uh, when I look at the program, I'm not, I'm an architect. I look at the program, it's about 100, 20, 150, 180,000 square feet, and we can argue over that. And we have about 180,000 square feet of land. Why are we building an FAR of five? That means we are building five times as much as what we are asking for in a highly dense, um, building, completely in contrast with the fabric of the neighborhood is. And attracting unnecessary traffic and unnecessary, uh, activities to, uh, what I would consider a relatively fragile neighborhood from where we have so many other options to develop this program and other way. And to resolve that, introduce parking in an area that's very difficult to build, underground parking. By the way, the, uh, water level is nine feet below grade at my property. Um, so why are we doing this? Are we doing it solely so we can have enough money so we can accommodate this? Are we selling our air rights so we can then accommodate something that we cannot afford? Is that what's going on? I mean, I'm, I'm flabbergasted by the scale of the project. Are we overreaching this? I mean, am I just not getting it somehow? Um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on. Go ahead. Oh, a- and any questions from council?
Go ahead and move on.
Plan commission?
No, they're all happy now, so let's move forward.
Okay. So cost, and again, we're working with Findorf to put a number on these options as they sit. And the parking below the buildings is part of this number. And this is a snapshot in time. So when you see the, the numbers, there is a range. And when Findorf is pricing us, they come up with a number. And then the range represents 10% below that and 25% above that, because there are many unknowns. We don't know if there's parking below the buildings yet. We don't know exactly what's in this. So this is a, a benchmark. Um, the estimates are based on a conceptual scope because we haven't programmed it. We don't know what the sustainability efforts are. We can tell you this sustainability is part of this number, but you know, future trends, if you know Middleton is, uh, their aspirations is to be net zero, that's a different discussion when you begin to program the buildings. Uh, they don't include operational costs. We do include the FFNE, and we call that furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. And again, that's an estimate. They do not account for potential offsetting revenue. And again, you know, we are addressing some of the sust- sustainability goals. And I should say the numbers include all the soft costs for, you know, fees for professionals, or consultants, I should say. Okay, so all of the options, if you were to build it right now with parking below the building, and again, I understand that that is part of discussion, that range is between 51 million and 72 and a half. That then with estimation, in Findorf's opinion, by 2025, that number goes up to 60 to 84 million. And that's just to illustrate the cost, you know, every five years for construction. Any questions from council or plan commission?
Can you just tell us for the gross square feet, what is that gross square foot?
400 though.
That's, that's.
That's all, that's all-inclusive. That's soft cost, that's the parking below the buildings, that, that's everything.
Wisconsin Institute of Discovery was at 420.
Emily?
Do we have an estimate of how much that would cost tax dollars, taxpayers? I'm assuming it would be an increase on taxpayer costs?
Or is it all federal money coming through some way?
Oh, if it was free, I mean, whatever, go build it. But I'm guessing we have to pay for it. Yes?
No, yes. And you know, there, there's another slide coming up where, you know, there's other discussion points on that as well.
Thank you.
But you're right. It's city staff, want to respond to that comment now or later on?
There is. We just need a question. For just past a referendum about the same range.
Well, here it is.
So that's what.
Funding strategies.
Thousand bucks a year for my taxes.
Yeah, so we, we have not spent a lot of time on costs and funding strategies yet because this is still very high-level and very conceptual. Um, I did look at some possible funding strategies and had, had discussion with the consultant. We've, we've got some of the major funding strategies listed here. Um, bottom line, we don't have a number yet on what the impact would be to the taxpayer because there's a lot of decisions that would need to be made about the program and what's selected and looking at these funding sources. But some of the things that we've talked about is, uh, we, we know, looking at the city's current debt profile, that we have existing debt for current facilities that will be paid off over the next several years, including for the fire, EMS, police station, middle operations center. So, you know, we have an opportunity to look at as we look at a new community campus, um, depending on the timing of construction, trying to layer in debt as some of those other facilities are paid off. And then we're picking up new debt for the facility to try to keep that at a constant debt service level. That's not going to fund the entire cost of the building based on the scale of the numbers we have, but that would be a, a first place to start to look. Uh, we talked earlier about the TIFF district, um, both subtraction as well as looking forward to the closure of TIFF district 20, or in 2030 for TIFF district number three. And that would be another thing that we could look at as part of an analysis of if we're looking at a community campus being built somewhere between 2025 and 2030, could you structure debt service payments on a new facility so maybe they start out at a lower level and then the debt service moves up after 2030, after we get the benefit of some of that additional tax base, again, to try to mitigate that impact on the taxpayers? Uh, we've talked about looking at the potential for TIFF district number three financing. Uh, TIFF can't be used to build a library or build a city hall, but there may be some elements of a campus plan that could be eligible for TIFF funding, primarily improvements for public parking or some of the infrastructure improvements and things that would facilitate some of the private development that's shown in some of the areas in the downtown. Uh, we can do impact fees for certain things. Uh, currently we have impact fees on new development that's helping to pay debt service for the fire and EMS facilities and the police station. Uh, for some of those, we are getting to the point where within the next few years, we may have recovered as much as we can from those impact fees. Uh, so we might look at, as those impact fees get phased out, do we look at establishing a new impact fee for the library? That is one of the allowable items. Again, city hall, senior center, you wouldn't be able to do an impact fee, but libraries are specifically allowed under state statute. There could be opportunities for fundraising for certain elements of, of the project and then possibility of looking at grant funding from various different sources for certain elements of the project. So I think at this stage, it's very conceptual. We need to focus on, you know, what is the interest and the type of development and the scope? And then as we would go through the process over the next several months and narrowing down to a recommended option, then we can flesh out each of these financing options.
Been any thought then given to the potential of private development and what rates might be, or if that would be the way to go? I mean, I, I would think that that would be something of a way to.
Yeah, that, that is a good point, and it really should be added, added to the, the slide here. Um, but that is something that has been talked about, and, and part of the goal of the project was to look at identifying those opportunities for private, uh, development. So that would be another potential source of funds that if there are development rights or revenues coming in from some of those areas, that could also be used to help offset some of the project cost.
I think your question is whether the privately dwelt then, then leased, is that what you're thinking about? Leased to the city?
No, they would lease it from us.
Okay.
I'm not, I mean, that's a policy decision we'll have to discuss. If we get to that point and we decide this is what we want to do, what do we want to do with our remaining land? I would, that's a policy decision.
Yes, Mike.
I would want to keep it.
Just to, um, to address some of the comments that have been made and concerning this particular area with our public lands in the downtown, uh, we were charged with trying to maximize the opportunity for long-term facility needs for our public spaces, considering a community center as part of that, and how it meshes with, uh, the senior center, library space, are things yet to be determined. So we're looking at the big picture. We're looking at long-term, I think at least 50 years. We want this to be a long-term investment for the entire community and maximizing our tax increment finance resources while we have it available from TID III, namely for eligible parking costs and eligible, um, landscaping and civic, uh, use space, like the somewhat plaza that we looked at between the buildings on Hubbard Avenue, for example. And to your point, Dan, concerning private development, it could be either sale of land or it could be, uh, selling of air rights, which I personally favor because I think we as a city should maintain public land as long as we can. Uh, it could be a long-term lease with the private development, but with the opportunity for the city to reclaim land for future iterations, looking beyond a 50-year timeframe. So those are things, uh, to help, uh, defray the cost as well. I think what my friend and neighbor Hamid is objecting to is, you know, when we put those large blocks of private development on the, uh, in the concept, uh, he finds that offensive and too much. But what we're trying to do is to look at the potential, not something that the council would necessarily follow or that the plan commission would necessarily recommend, but that we would look at what is the potential there to offset some of the public infrastructure costs. And in this community, we want to be sensitive to our neighbors and by design. And we knew the risk of putting that block on that, on the, uh, the map would set people off, and it certainly did. But, uh, we, we didn't want you to say, well, what's the opportunity afterward? We wanted to, to look at that as part of this process, and then it can be scaled down. And so like, uh, it was either Bob or Paul said, we're looking at what current zoning would allow, uh, B4 does allow to go up to four levels. So I've gotten an earful from my wife even on this, so, uh, I, I've heard it from home as well as from other folks, but you know, that's the, the idea is to look at the maximum potential, and it can be scaled down. The costs, of course, will be more if we have less private development to offset the public costs. But we could also scale that down through our, our next step in programming and looking at how we have synergies with the senior center space, with the community center, with the library. There's a lot of opportunity for reviewing that. And then beyond that, like we talked about earlier with the health and equity lens, how do we make it accessible for all parts of the community? Uh, for folks who don't have a car? How do we provide the transportation that enables them to use the facility on a level playing field, uh, with those who can easily walk to these facilities? So those are many considerations, but we have to take this initial first step, and then we'll have a public process this, this year. Uh, I think you were probably about to get to that, Bob, but we're looking at another, I think, eight to 10 months, uh, well, through December, right?
Right. So a couple of the next steps, um, community input and community survey, what we've presented here, I think is what we'd like to get up onto the website and, um, spend a month or two, um, allowing everybody in the community to make comments, thumbs up, thumbs down, dot democracy, however we want to, um, start to gauge some of that input. Um, because we're getting a lot of good input today, so I can imagine if we multiply that by, you know, many thousands, um, this will only get better. Refining the three options into one final recommendation, as Paul had pointed out, is in our scope and happens, uh, down the pike, um, and preparing that final community campus plan report. So those are sort of the big rocks for us as consultants. And I know this is a little tricky to read, but 2019 is kind of all in green, that's behind us. That's the work that, um, the crew and, uh, the committee, uh, and some of you have been part of. Looking into 2020, we're in January right now, having this work session. Um, what you see in the blue, in the baby blue, uh, around, uh, item number five, is this health impact assessment process. Um, we're kind of, don't have a crystal ball, but kind of saying, well, that might happen if it could start next month, uh, which would be awesome. That could go until probably September. Um, be some overlap, maybe sometime in August where our, uh, firms would come back into play, taking that input. Uh, assumptions will probably change, program requirements might change. Um, we would take all of that input and really start to hone down to what would be a preferred community campus plan. Findorf will sharpen their pencil and get us some numbers. We'll have better input about how to, um, recommend funding and implementation strategies and come to all of you in December for approval. And I think that's it. Yes?
Yes, Bob. That's good.
Maybe this is for Jen. As far as the committee is concerned, is the option of closing off Hubbard off the table, is that a done deal?
Nothing is off the table. I think we're still discussing it, so.
Yeah, the committee, the committee has talked about it. We, um, we never formally voted or took action on what the streetscape would look like, other than we, we have talked a lot about public space, what the difference is between public and private space. I'd say it's not off the table.
And then with regard to, uh, the building costs and the health equity assessment, you didn't say it, but I'm assuming these are going to be designed as zero net energy buildings?
We hadn't discussed that in the committee, but there's been some ideas about that thrown around, I'll say.
There will be a, a policy discussion at the sustainability committee, uh, is it next Monday, Kelly? There she is. Yes, in two days, uh, about a potential recommendation, and I believe that's incorporated within the recommendation. Of course, uh, that's another consideration for cost too. There could be initially more cost to accommodate net zero, but long-term, uh, operating costs for the city would be reduced substantially by having net zero energy. So again, it's, uh, reward and risk. What's the, the upfront cost for the long-term benefit?
More questions from, um, and, yes, Sandy?
You're showing us the cost. I'm hearing.
Sandy, you really should come up to the microphone.
Here, we'll bring the microphone to you.
Oh, I thought I speak loud enough. Um, what I'm hearing from seniors is cost, cost, cost. And if you're going 51 to 72 million, they're having a heart attack just with the property taxes the way they are right now. And I know me, I live right, I just lived down in Hubbard and I had major, two years in a row, property increases. And I know one was the school. But they're really concerned about what is this going to cost because I want to stay in my home. So that's a big thing. And they also want to know, why can't you just renovate some of these buildings? Why can't you give the senior center what they need? Why can't you get the library what you need? Build a nice, wonderful, uh, you know, uh, hall here or a city hall and then give us a shared space here. So they're asking a lot of questions, and the big thing is cost, cost, because they want to stay in their homes. So, you know, keep that under consideration.
A great point. And Bill, just one quick question for you. What is the maximum debt city had ever had? I thought it was about $42 million. Is that true or not?
Higher than that. I, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
I, I could probably comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, I know at one time we had $60 million in debt, um, in the maximum in TID III borrowing years, which would have been about 20 years ago.
That was because of TIFF series, so, all right.
Right. But you know, to, to Sandy's questions and questions that not just seniors, but everybody will have about long-term costs, what we were describing earlier with our debt service dropping off after 2025, 2026, is that the potential for fitting this in, that window as other debt service drops off to try to minimize the tax impact and maximize the long-term benefit for the entire community. So, you know, and, um, one thing Bill mentioned earlier that you might have missed was the potential beyond tax increment district number three, when money comes back to the city, uh, to the underlying taxing jurisdictions from what TIFF has built up over time, there's potential. TIF has built up over time, there's potential to phase that in in our long-term debt service as well to modify costs. The library impact fees are another option. And of course, from an operating standpoint, the sustainability and renewable energy potential. Right now, we have very inefficient buildings. They weren't built to be efficient and to use renewable energy. So all of those things, and probably others, well, fundraising would be another possibility, too, can go into the overall thinking and how we can moderate costs over time. But we are thinking about that, and part of that is the shared use space concept as well. Because having three independent, inefficient buildings for the long term doesn't really necessarily work out well. For the short term, it may, in renovating, may for the short term, but how long can we renovate? Very inefficient, and in our case, City Hall is a very customer-unfriendly building. Actually, the senior center is to some extent, too, because of your maze of rooms throughout. People get accustomed to it, but it's not the best in terms of overall use.
So, Mike, how much synergy you think we'd get in terms of staffing? Could we get a kind of a... How many positions you think we could reduce? Could we get a efficiency of about a million dollars? That's what...
I don't think we... I don't think we're estimating that we would reduce staffing. I think what we're talking about is reducing space. You know, so what... To the point of what Paul was raising in terms of city hall space, it's very inefficient. We use some things for storage right now, but it's not... We're not using it efficiently because we're in a very inefficient building. But space certainly can be looked at more efficiently. The amount of square footage per person can be looked at. And then, of course, the shared space that we've been talking about quite a bit.
Go ahead, in the back there.
This is just a basic question. I'm sorry if it was... You guys said it before, but looking 50 years out, what are the population projections that you're attempting to serve, looking 30 to 50 years out? And how did you arrive at that?
I don't know that our consultants looked at population, right? I know that when we've talked about it from a comprehensive planning standpoint, Abby, feel free to correct me, but, you know, with the maximum population that Community of Bishop's Bay would add and other potential single-family on the north side of the city, there's not much else other than building up within. We're probably looking at maximizing at about 30,000 in population.
Wasn't the 2025 projection somewhere around 24?
Yeah, that's probably about right. But I'm talking about even further out. Kari, you're asking about 50 years.
Well, you were talking about building to accommodate the 50-year vision.
Right.
The council did mention in the library study, there was a demographic analysis that was the basis of that.
Right. So there was a demographic analysis for the library. Now, an interesting note about that, our library serves a large number of the public in Madison, and that's to our benefit financially for the library. I believe about 40% of the revenues come from users of the library from outside through the Dane County Funding Formula or the Library System Funding Formula. So we have to accommodate for that, too, if we want to maintain the finances for the library for the long term.
And don't forget, we've got senior hoppers that come from all over all the...
And Sandy's raising the point that the senior center serves a larger area as well. So it's more than just population, we're looking at service demand. For City Hall, our service demand doesn't stretch as far as the libraries or the senior centers.
So one part which I really like, I think Paul or Bob mentioned, is that validating these spaces because getting, you know, number three times of space for the library and reducing for the city hall and some of those things, I think validating those spaces is very important because that could make a change, the whole thing here. So that would be... It's good you're doing it. That is very, very important. Any other questions from the Plan Commission? Someone back there? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jessica, and I own the Regal Fund in downtown Middleton. And I know I may have missed some pieces because I came in a little bit late. I know parking's been a huge issue for a lot of us, and retailers especially have been very concerned about what direction that's headed in. And I'm sure that the city isn't not planning for things like that, but I'm curious, with each of these proposed ideas, would it be possible to get the numbers on how many spots do we currently have in this downtown area with the parking lots that would be affected by these plans? And then with each new proposed of these three ideas, how much parking would be available in each of those? Does that make sense? And that may have already been addressed, and I may have missed it.
We didn't get into that level of the weeds, but we certainly will put that information onto the documents when we put them on the website for your comments. Just a quick editorial about parking. And this is really important because you are to be lauded at your commitment to sustainability. And I understand you're not in control of your bus or transit service, but you do need to... There is a direct connection between achieving sustainability and funding the private, personal, single-occupant automobile. There's a big cost on these projects for that. Will automated vehicles and intelligent vehicles and electric vehicles help? For sure. And that's part of looking 20, 30 years out. So I understand it's really important for people, especially in the business community, to say, I have 350 parking spaces, I want 350 parking spaces tomorrow. But do you really need 350 parking spaces in 2025 or 2030? So I would really challenge everybody here to think creatively and just look at your overall community and where we face climate change and climate crisis as it relates to the automobile and parking.
Bill just reminded me of one other thing that we've been thinking about at a staff level that isn't yet reflected in the presentation that you've seen. As we phase a future community campus development, we would need to accommodate for the parking that's being removed from that site in that phase. And then we could proceed to Phase Two. And then, once that parking is accommodated, we can proceed to Phase Three. But one of the things that we're thinking of is it might make sense for the city to decide to hold on to the Terrace Avenue parking lots. Those are 24-hour surface parking lots currently. They could continue to function well as surface parking for the near term, but if we ever get commuter rail in the city, for example, that would be an excellent location for a commuter rail station in our downtown. And then at that point, it would be more easy to displace those parking stalls that exist there.
Excellent point, Abby.
So I just wanted to make a few comments. I'm Jen Murray, and I'm the Chair of the Community Campus Planning Committee. And I really wanted to thank the committee members as we continue to look at this project and their work, and also that the city has placed an emphasis on bringing this project and these ideas to the community and reaching out to make sure that we have these conversations. I think what we talked a lot about today in terms of flexibility of space, public and private space, and what it means, is really important to talk about right now in this project. And as we move forward, and the committee has supported the health equity, health and equity lens pieces of this project, that we also think about those components as we move forward because many functions within these buildings will add to the health of Middleton, as many of you all know. So I wanted you all to know that the committee has supported what the consultant team has done, and we want to thank the consultant team up to this point for your efforts. We're very excited about moving forward to see what's next.
Any other final questions or comments from the Plan Commission?
Any from council?
Thank you, everyone. Great job. Thank you to the staff, and I will ask a motion to adjourn the Plan Commission.
Someone second?
All those in favor say aye. Okay, Plan Commission.
Council?
Someone second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.